Hello, okay. Welcome, everyone, to the City of Warrenville Public Safety and Finance Committee, the whole regular meeting. Public comments will be available in person during the meeting. Remote access will be for viewing purposes only. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Alderman Ashauer?
Here.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Here.
Alderman Lockett is absent. Alderman Widener is absent. Alderman Wilkie?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Everyone that can, please rise for the pledge. All right, we'll move on with the business of the meeting. First thing, public comments. Does anyone have anything to say tonight? No public comments. Officials and staff comments? Alderman? Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Berry?
I would just like to say thank you to Public Works. They had their open house last week. It was great. There were people all over. There were kids everywhere. The kids were up in the trucks. I think they were trying to drive the, you know, street cleaning machine, and it was just, it was a good time. And it was nice because each one of the gentlemen that runs a specific thing like water or sewer streets or whatever they do, they had a presentation on it and explained how everything works, what they do, how they do it. They gave out little tchotchke things. It was, it was great. They had a really nice time, and they served hot dogs. So, next year, if there's the Public Works Open House again, which I hope they do have, make sure that you put it on your calendar and go, because it was just a very fun family event. Thank you to them, to the staff for doing such a great job.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mayor?
First thing, to the VFW and the Legion, they just did a fantastic job, as they always do, on the Memorial Day recognitions yesterday. It was very nice. It was a beautiful turnout. Can always use more, but kudos to them on pulling that all together, as they do every year. The other, last week, Chief Bonilla and I were invited to the Hundred Club, a reception for the Hundred Club. I don't know if you're familiar with this. This is an organization that, hopefully, we never have to experience their services. They swoop in upon the death of either a firefighter or a police officer killed in the line of duty and support the family and provide scholarships to any children of those who pass for their, in their lifetime. So, they do a tremendous amount of good in the community when they need to. Hopefully, we never have to experience that, like I said, but if you're interested, I'd encourage you to look for the Hundred Club online. You can find information about them and be supportive of them. And Chief and I were there last Wednesday, so, thanks.
Thank you. Assistant Clerk? Treasurer? No other comments? We'll move on with the business of the meeting. Number one, consider an ordinance approving the disposal of surplus city-owned IT equipment. Assistant Administrator Morgan?
Thank you. Orbis, the city's IT managed services provider, has identified a list of older, non-working IT equipment, such as computers, monitors, printers, and network gear, that is no longer needed by the city. Most of these items have either been replaced or have simply reached the end of their life, and Orbis will securely wipe the data from these devices and will coordinate recycling through eScrap Technologies or through the Kane County Recycling Center. Draft ordinance is included with your agenda backup material, listing the items and authorizing staff to move forward with the proper disposal process, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, can I have a motion? Alderman Kruckenberg?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the City Council approve an ordinance authorizing the disposal of surplus personal property owned by the City of Warrenville.
Second?
We have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those that disagree, say nay. The ayes carry. The motion passes. Item number two, consideration of a resolution approving professional service agreement with the Orbis Solutions Incorporated for the purchase of surveillance upgrades and technology services. Deputy Chief Dawson?
Good evening. Let's figure this right. The security system at the Police Department was installed in 1997 when the building was constructed. The system is antiquated and no longer functions as it should. Most of the cameras have poor image quality and are formatted in black and white. Coaxial cable wiring was the standard back then, does not support modern-day technology. Staff is proposing a total system replacement. Additionally, staff is proposing the installation of two security cameras at the Warrenville Historical Museum, one covering the front and one covering the rear building of the building. The proposed security camera upgrades significantly enhance safety and security in these city buildings. The proposed systems will use the same platform as the Axis Keyless Entry System that was recently installed. The cost of the project is $65,136. The Police Department portion is $59,136. $27,979 of the cost was, is for a server, which will manage the cameras for the Police Department and the museum, as well as additional cameras added at city buildings in the future. $6,000 of the cost is adding two cameras and associated hardware at the Warrenville Historical Museum. In July and August 2022, similar quotes were obtained from three other vendors for the Police Department Building, Impound Lot, and City Hall. While these quotes did not include the Warrenville Historical Museum and are now obsolete, they reflect Orbis' competitively priced quote. Upon further review of the contract, it was discovered six necessary cameras were missing from the quote. I discussed this discrepancy with Orbis. They have committed to making it right with additional cameras while staying within budget. As of this meeting date, Orbis has not provided an updated contract. This is the first phase of a multi-phase project assessing the security of city buildings, and with that, I'd like to open up to any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Alderman Kruckenberg?
You said this is a multi-year project. How many years?
We're planning on three years at this time.
Three years?
Mm-hmm.
So, during this time, when does the annual maintenance agreement kick in?
I think the man, I believe it, this, it would be at the installation of the cameras for year one. I'm anticipating that might be renegotiated in the future with additional contracts.
Is there any way that we could have the same, same amount of the maintenance agreement until everything is installed?
That's something I could check into, and I could get back to you on that.
And then afterwards, obviously, you know, we can negotiate or whatever, for further years or whatever, but...
Sure.
Something to look into. I think it's a great idea, given how old some of the equipment sounds like it is, so...
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Mayor, no other comments? Can I have a motion? Alderman Kruckenberg?
I'd like to make a motion to accept staff recommendation and, staff recommend and, recommend the City Council waive the competitive bidding requirement and approve a proposal with Orbis Solutions, Inc., for the purchase of security camera upgrades at the Police Department and Warrenville Historical Museum, in the total amount of $65,136, and the annual technology services maintenance agreement in the amount of $9,000.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who disagree, say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item. Consideration of Police Operations Assessment Vendor Contract with Center for Public Safety Management. Chief Benioff?
Yes, good evening. We are looking to enter into a contract with an organization to do our police assessment of our operations. That is the Center for Public Safety Management. One of the goals for the Police Department is to make sure that we are staying on top of, you know, compliance with state and federal laws, compliance with state training standards, maintaining a state of preparedness, ensuring accountability, maintaining efficient operations in all areas of policing, and reflecting the expectation of the community and municipal stakeholders. We try to anticipate and cover everything within the Police Department, the leadership does. However, we can't anticipate everything that comes our way, so to be better prepared for all situations, we thought we'd have the operations assessment conducted to make sure that we are acting as efficiently as possible within the organization of the Police Department. We've looked at several companies who provide this service, and we felt that the Center for Public Safety Management offered the best of what we were looking for as a department and as a city. Some of their examples that they provided online with regard to their reports of other police departments that they did were very extensive, and mo, all of them were done with data analysis. So, what they do is they come in and they request a bunch of data regarding our calls for service, the workload, things that we're doing around town, and they take all of that data and they put it against the information that they receive from conducting interviews in patrol. They interview the stakeholders within the municipality, which would be some of the elected officials, some of the residents. They take that, they go to the different departments within the organization, such as investigations and administration, and they even look at the culture of the organization to see how that's operated when they conduct their interviews. They are very extensive. They have a very good reputation for providing a good recommendations for the Police Department to operate as efficiently as the City of Warrenville expects. So, tonight, we are just asking for permission to go ahead and enter into a contract with CPSM. I'll answer any questions if anyone has any.
Thank you. Any questions? Alderman Kruckenberg?
So, is this kind of like an audit?
I wouldn't say it's, it's an audit, per se, but it's more of if you kind of did a home inspection on your home because you wanted to see what was wrong with it, because you're not an expert in home improvement. So, it's kind of like that. They'll come in, they'll check under the rugs, they'll check the basement to make sure that everything's good to go, and that's the best analogy that I could come up with really what they're doing. So, they'll come in and they'll check all the things that we may not think, to think about, and they'll let us know what best practices are based on their knowledge of national standards.
Have you ever done anything? Have you ever done one of these before, like you personally, or do you know if Warrenville's ever done one before?
I know that Warrenville has done other studies in other aspects, like a staffing study. They did not too long ago, but I don't think we've done anything this extensive within the Police Department.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mayor?
Yeah, I applaud you for taking this on. Many years ago, I worked with a company called the Institute for Liability Management, which did similar things to this, and then, once they were done, they would put together some of the cohorts of departments who have done it as kind of like a professional listening group. Do you see anything like that coming out of this, or is it simply they come in, they give you the report, you run with it, and we're done with them?
Yep, that's, so that's what I've seen, and some of the other departments that I spoke to, they basically give you the report, and they say, here are our recommendations based on what we've found, and that's it. They don't really, I mean, we pay them just to come in and do the study for us, and then they provide us with their recommendations, and then, that's it. I mean, they don't provide any more guidance or anything. It's up to us to then implement those if they fit our needs.
You're ready for it?
I'm nervous, but I'm ready for it. We're definitely ready for it.
I'm sure you are. Thanks.
Anyone else? I just, do, do they give you a sense of how we compare with other communities as far as police per capita, amount of ground covered, staffing?
Yeah, I didn't see anything in their reports where they're comparing to other communities as I, as I looked at some of their previous work. What, because the only thing that they do is they do their, they use their data analysis based on our needs, not necessarily what other communities' needs are. I mean, they look to what's specific to Warrenville, and they take that, and they put that up against our staffing, up against, you know, our calls for service, and data like that is what they, what they do, but I haven't seen anything where they're comparing us to other communities. It's more of how can we operate as efficiently as possible for the residents of the City of Warrenville and the stakeholders?
It just seemed like it might be valuable information for the council.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else? Administrator White?
Yeah, just a quick note. So, I agree with the chief, they don't compare to other communities, but they do look at the data and compare it across the country based on standards. They have sort of gotten away from, it seems like, in the world of policing to having a per capita model, where it's, you know, one officer for every however many residents, to more of a, again, data-driven, how many calls for service, what's the community policing model in that community, what kinds of traffic enforcement and specialty units they have that are prioritized in that community, and recommending sufficient staffing based on the community's priorities, less than the population size, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Any other questions? Can I have a motion? Alderman Berry?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the City Council waive the competitive bidding requirements and direct the city attorney to draft a resolution entering, entering into a vendor contract with the Center for Public Safety Management for a police operations assessment in the amount of $48,500, and travel costs not to exceed $5,000.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item, item four is consideration of a contract renewal for city prosecutor services with Christine Charakowitz. Chief Benioff?
Yes, sir. This is a request to renew our contract with Prosecutor Charakowitz. We've used her since April 2015. We've been very satisfied with her services. Each year, we go ahead and renew her contract because of how satisfied we are with what she's doing. She is actually retiring this year, so this would be a last contract with her, and then we will start seeking new counsel to help us do this. But her fees are only going up by $10 per session, so we wanted to request a renewal to maintain her until the end of her term, which would be, I think, December of 2025.
Thank you. Any questions? Alderman?
She does the adjudication sessions. Is that the sessions you're referring to?
No, ma'am. She's our, she's our prosecutor. We do local prosecution. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion, please? Alderman Berry?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the City Council approve the contract renewal for the city prosecutor's services with Attorney Christine Charakowitz for the period of June 1, 2025, through December 31, 2025.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number five is informational, progress update on the new ERP. Finance Director Dolestron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to provide you a brief update on the status of the ERP. As you know, it went live the beginning of May. I won't say that the implementation wasn't difficult, because it was. There was a lot to absorb as far as all the functionality of the new system compared to the system we have been on for 30 years, so there's going to be still some growing pains that we'll experience for a while, but overall, I'm very satisfied with where we're headed. It's working out extremely well, 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 so far, but we do have a lot still to learn. A few of the things we have in place now is the use of purchase orders, which we have not, not, not had before. The good, the good thing about that is that it's been decentralized to each of the departments. They, they will be submitting all their own per, per purchase order requests, which then go, go through a workflow that do require approval still of all their department heads and that kind of thing, so that's going to vastly improve our ability to track what we're purchasing. Not that we've had any issues with it in the past, but this will certainly tighten up what we're able to report on. Also, it's related to that, we decentralized all the invoicing, which means that all the invoices will not be handled in finance. They will be directly handled by the individual departments relative to the POs that they've requested, and then all that will funnel into the Finance Department to finish off that process of our payments that we need to make. Sharing is, is up and in place with B, BSNA integrated payments. It's in place here at City Hall and at the, the Police Department as well, and so far it has worked very well. The harder part we had along the way was utility billing. A lot of work went into getting the 510 bills out, getting them out accurately. As you know, they did not go, go on in time, but there was simply no way to do that. As a result, we did, to extend the due date on those bills until June 6, which would be a little longer than the, than the May 31 date we normally would have had, and so far, everything has gone, gone well. We've had very few complaints from anyone yet. The only complaints we had, I'll make sure complaints is the right word, but the only inquiries we had so far has been, where's my bill? Because they were expecting it a couple days after the 10th, and they didn't receive it then, so that's been our, our largest issue so, so, so far, as far as residents are concerned. All the payments that were made that we, we were closed, which was quite, quite, quite a few, as you would expect, they were all entered by staff before the bills went out and made sense. All that was caught up and entered into our system. It took a lot of work, but it did have to be done, and we were able to get, get that done through a team effort of everyone within our Finance Department. This week, probably by tomorrow, we'll soft-launch the online portal for people to pay their utility bills online. I'm working with the Communications Coordinator to get everything updated on our website to make sure that everybody has access to do that online. There, there will also be a flyer that will go out with the June 10 bills that will invite everyone to go online and get signed up for online payments and the ability to access their accounts and see their account history online as well. Also, with that June 10 bill, there will be a new bill format, which will go out. It'll be a different one than we've had in place, and it'll actually be one of the same things I thought was pretty cool on it was, there'll be a usage graph that will show up, that'll show multiple months of, of the usage on each individual bill. I think it looks goo, goo, good, and will provide our residents with extra information that they haven't been able to have until now. We are still working on a few meter import, or meter read import issues that we're still trying, trying to resolve with, between BSNA and Neptune, which is our system for doing our meter reading, but that's pretty close to be, being resolved, and will have to be resolved before we get the June bills out and ready to go. I think that's our biggest thing so far, so I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments from the council? Alderman Berry?
Director Dolestron, I would just like to thank you and everyone that's worked on this ERP. This has been going on for years, but everything seems to have come together quite nicely. And I know it was a big project the last month and a half or so, and I know that all the Aldermen really appreciate all the hard work everyone has done to get this completed. If we've only had a couple problems with water bills for people not getting them, I said, that's pretty good. So, thank you again to everyone that's worked so hard on this. It's just been a long process, and you guys have stuck it out and done an amazing job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll pass, pass, pass it along to the remainder of the staff.
Anyone else?
I think so.
Administrator White?
Just also want to acknowledge, the Police Department helped during the week that we were closed at City Hall to accept payments and support. We had staff and administration, and essentially, it was a citywide effort to get this done over the last few weeks and a lot of folks involved, so I just wanted to make sure to praise all of the staff that were helpful during that whole process.
Just, there's people in the council that haven't been here as long as this thing's been going on with our old mess that we had, and it's so refreshing to see the excitement about the new program that, that everybody seems to be much happier with, and it should make the city function better. So, thank you very much for the update.
You're very welcome.
Item number six, an informational update on the Administration, Finance, and Police Department work plans and decision packages. Does anyone have any questions? That's an information-only. If you have any questions, we can answer for you. No? Last but not least, commendations.
We have two tonight. Thank you. The first one is from the West Chicago Police Department, and on January 25, the West Chicago Police Department responded to a shots fired call. The responding units arrived quickly and set up a perimeter. Six subjects were... Six subjects were located in a garage and detained. To assist routine security and transportation of the suspects, Officer Cologne Alatriste, Officer Pickens, and Officer Mike Law responded to assist. Additionally, Officer Cologne Alatriste assisted with translation until one of our Spanish-speaking officers arrived at RPD. Without the aid of these officers, we would not have been as efficient in our efforts. The actions of Officer Cologne Alatriste, Officer Pickens, and Officer Law are a great example of the positive partnership between the Warrenville and West Chicago Police Departments. I would like to formally recognize their professionalism and thank them for their support. And the second one we have tonight is for ACO Josh Perry. And on behalf of the students and staff at Jefferson Preschool, I want to extend our heartfelt thanks for your participation in our second annual Touch a Truck event. Your presence truly made this special day an unforgettable experience for our preschoolers. The children were absolutely thrilled to see and learn about the vehicles up close, and the opportunity to interact with such dedicated professionals left a lasting impression. We are incredibly grateful for the time, effort, enthusiasm, enthusiasm you brought to the event. It was a joy to witness our students' curiosity and excitement as they engaged with you. In the pictures I shared below, I wanted to point out that many of our students have complex diagnoses which impact their communication, sensory processing, and motor skills. You'll notice one progression of photos in the bottom left that shows a student observing the back end of the fire truck, exploring and moving progressively closer to finally touching the truck. This was a huge step for him and a, and a great example of why we organize and partner with you to host this event. It gives our students an opportunity to stretch their skills. It's so awesome to see. Your commitment to your work and to our community is truly appreciated, and we are thankful for all you do.